This meeting will be called back to order at 6:30 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
It is recommended that the Board approve the December 7th, 2021 agenda as submitted. So we have a motion and a second that the agenda of December 7th, 2021 be approved as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the Board approve the following consent agenda. The approval of the minutes of November 23rd, 2021 as submitted. The acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee on Special Education. The acceptance of the recommendation from the Committee on Preschool Special Education. The acceptance of the recommendation from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes. And a request to approve the letters that you have listed below. So we have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the that the Treasury report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, the general fund budget status report, the school lunch fund cash report, and the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the months ending October 31st, 2021 be approved. So we have a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to to special reports. Dr. Putnam?
Thanks, Mr. Elig. We have one special report this evening. And I'm having Marty Morrow come up. Marty wears many hats in our district, but tonight is here as our Medicaid coordinator. And this is our annual Medicaid Compliance Plan recertification. And Marty, I think you have, do you have a clicker there?
I don't see one.
All right, we can get you one.
Oh, thank you. Okay. All right. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm here to just give you a refresher and updates on Medicaid and education in Penfield. So this explains that the state program enables school districts and counties to access federal monies for medically necessary related services to Medicaid eligible students with disabilities. We have a compliance committee in Penfield. Scott Dreschler is the Medicaid Compliance Officer. Bill Maloney is a member and so am I. We meet quarterly to review the Medicaid alerts that come out from the state, establish best practices and procedures, and to review and update our compliance plan. The information needed to contact anyone in a case of suspect for waste, fraud, or abuse is here in front of you for Scott within the district or the Office of Medicaid Inspector General. One of the first things we have to do when we want to bill for Medicaid is to get a parental consent to access the monies from the insurance. This is just a one-time consent. We typically get that upon registration. And without that, we cannot get reimbursement for services. The people who write and order prescribed services, doctors or speech pathologists, have to be enrolled in the Medicaid program. And so we have to check on that, make sure that they're enrolled. All our district speech pathologists are. And any doctors that we can bill for services also are enrolled in this program. So Medicaid requires providers of services to have the following qualifications. They have to be certified and licensed, and they have to have an NPI number. So that's a National Provider Identification Number. Or they have to have, for speech, physical therapy or occupational therapy, those certifications and working under the direction of a certified licensed provider. The National Provider Identifier is just a number that is used for tracking providers and keeping names and personal information out of the system. Allows us to track providers and make sure that they have the requirements that are needed. Once we receive a script for a student to receive services, we have to double-check and make sure that the person writing the script or the providers that are giving the service are not excluded. There's a national exclusion list. So we have to double-check those lists to make sure they're not being accused of abuse or fraud or waste. We have partnerships with agencies like Mary Carriola and other private schools to provide services for our students. And so when they accept to do services, they allow us to bill for those services and agree to comply with the Medicaid requirements. All the different items needed for billing for Medicaid claims are listed here. There's a lot of details involved in just tracking all that. So that's why I have to manage those details for our providers. Then there's a cost report. It happens this time of year. And basically, it starts with what they call random moments. They check on the providers and make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. They have a report that we fill out that counts all the students that are getting those Medicaid eligible services, whether the students are eligible or not. They check on the payroll and benefits of the providers that work within the district. And they also check the supplemental lists of any providers that work for our students. We have audits that we go through. So our BOSI's audits our paperwork every other year. And we actually just finished an internal audit this year. So just trying to make sure we're keeping all our eyes dotted and Ts crossed. That's the process. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Barb?
It's not a question. It's truly just a comment. And having been that longtime speech pathologist, now retired, who had to do all of these Medicaid notes and thank you for, because it's not, it's not easy.
You're welcome, Ms.
And I just was one person. I can't imagine what it's like having to do all the support staff that you have to do related service, so.
They're a very caring group. They take good care of our students.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Board?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Marty, thank you very much. And just second what Ms. Babier said around the amount of work that goes into it, the behind-the-scenes, our service providers up front working with their kids are doing incredible work. It becomes like this federal regulation. It's paperwork and collecting and data and then submitting and following all those rules. And so thank you for everything that you do behind the scenes to make that actually happen. And I know this is the busy season around that. So again, thank you and thanks for coming out tonight to present to the Board.
Thank you.
That would be awesome.
Next is our Student Representative Report. Our Student Representative is Lila Harvey. Ms. Harvey?
To begin with, the district-wide updates. All schools are currently in the process of having their winter concerts. Elementary schools are this week, with Cobble's having their concert tonight. And Scribner ending the elementary concerts early next week. The book fair was last Saturday and was quite a success, which featured musical performances from each elementary school's music department. Here at the high school, the junior winter concert was last night and featured performances from Uptown Express, which is our men's choir here, the Philharmonia Orchestra, Concert Choir, and the Concert Band. The NISMA Winter Conference was held and included three PHS students in the choir. These students were selected out of a possible 900 across the state. In addition, the Hockstein Youth Symphony Orchestra, which is the highest level of orchestra available, included five PHS students and performed last week as well. The play "Your Good Man Charlie Brown" was a huge success. The robotics team hosted the New York Excelsior Finger Lakes Qualifier on Saturday. Students participated in the Rock to Change Summit a couple of weeks ago. And seniors Lauren Castellani and Catherine Healy were named All-Great Rochester Swimmers. With the boys volleyball team winning states, Penfield did very well during the fall season, ending with four sectional titles in boys volleyball, girls soccer, field hockey, and cheerleading, two regional titles in girls soccer and boys volleyball, and finally, the one-state title, which was from boys volleyball. And winter sports have started and once again have very enthusiastic student sections. At Bay Trail, eighth graders designed Rube Goldberg projects in tech class. And one House A student submitted her work and it was published in the Rock Area Literacy Council. Moving on to the elementary schools. At Scribner, second graders are using tic-tac-toe to practice their addition skills. At Cobble's, first graders are learning about and how to play percussion instruments. At Harris Hill, Mrs. Nodar Esche's class, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, earned a treat, which was a pajama day and to bring in their favorite stuffed animal. And fifth graders went on a trip to the planetarium. Finally, at Indian Landing, Ms. Kaiser's class examined facts and artifacts to learn about ancient civilizations. The holiday Helping Hands has begun once again and is the collection of monetary donations and non-perishables, which runs through December 14th. And finally, fourth graders played a math version of Connect Four to practice their skills on decimal points. Thank you.
Thank you. And Board members, any questions for Lila? I will say, I just happened to catch a part of the junior concert livestream last night. And of course, it was very well done. And the nice thing about that is it now allows people who can't go in to see it. But it also allows people who aren't local. So when kids have family members, parents, grandparents who are farther away, they can still see it like they're there. So I hope that's something that, you know, we can benefit from in the future. Now it's Superintendent's Updates. Dr. Putnam?
Just for the record, I think that moving forward, I should go before Ms. Harvey because she does an incredible job with updates. I'm taking notes over here. I'm like, oh, I should have put that in my update. That was great. But you absolutely, I am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say three things that you shared that I just wanted a second, but everything was great. Just honestly, you really have your pulse on the finger of all of our schools and what's happening. It's really, really awesome. So great job. I know it's your first year as a Board Rep, but, but you're doing a really great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have some student and staff honors. I do have a few Penfield School District updates. And then I'm gonna turn over to Dr. Driffl, because it is that time of year of annual reserves, fund plan, and budget updates as we gear up for budget planning for the following school year. We'll start with, as Ms. Harvey mentioned, the Hockstein Youth Symphony Orchestra. These are the five high school students. Very proud of them. And again, our incredible music programs, really from K through 12th grade, starting with first grade in the Suzuki model. And I'm just very proud of our students. And please congratulate a Hockstein student if you, if you know one. So it's just really great. The published author, as was mentioned, is Mira Renjen, who recently did have her work published in the Rochester Area Literacy Council's 2021 book, "So Runs the River." Just really cool to think about eighth grade already being a published author and getting your start here in Penfield. So congratulations to Ms. Renjen. And I'm sure we'll see great things moving forward. So I don't have slides. Ms. Harvey, you remind me a couple of things I just gotta tell you. One is the SEPTA Book Fair. We'll get an update from SEPTA, our Special Education Parent Teacher Association. They did hold a different fundraiser this year that typically is at a local bookstore. This time, it was at a local church and it was an amazing craft book fair. So many therapy dogs, principals reading books. It was really, really cool to see. And they're a great partner for the district with supporting our students. And when you bring a three-year-old like I did, we walked out with a lot of books. I wasn't planning, but the teenagers didn't wake up, so the three-year-old got whatever he wanted to read. So it was great and a great cause. Charlie Brown, absolutely amazing musical. We haven't had one in a couple of years. And it's really exciting to say that was their start. And they're gearing up for a spring musical as well. So, and we went as a family. It was, it was so much fun. And then robotics, absolutely hosting it here. I was out of town most of this weekend, but they just do an incredible job. And it's a lot of fun to see people back. Obviously having to wear masks, but back in person for robotics. A lot of it last year was virtual events and you just don't get the same feel. Obviously, we know that. Same with our musicals and the book fair. So thank you so much, Ms. Harvey, for adding those and reminding me as well. Couple of updates, our fun topic of COVID-19, as I do every meeting for the last 19 months. Just a brief update on COVID. So as you know, we put every Wednesday out our COVID numbers, active cases in the district. And Monroe County still sees, you know, increase. We're starting to see some good news, at least for Penfield Central, is that back on the 17th of November, we had 39 active cases that week. And we're slowly going back down. So last Wednesday was 21 active cases. We post every Wednesday, so I'm not sure what our number is tomorrow. We do believe it's gonna be a little bit higher because of some COVID cases we've seen. But again, our safety protocols are preventing exposures in school. And that really comes down to the Monroe County Department of Health, their definition of close contact. And that is less than six feet, no mask for more than 15 minutes. So in schools, following our protocols, we're able to really not have close contacts in our buildings, in our classrooms. At the end of the day, we are all frustrated. We have COVID fatigue. It's time. But on the other hand, I said back in the summer when we reopened this year, my number-one goal, the Board's number-one goal, the district's number-one goal, is to keep kids in school five days a week. So I can keep wearing a mask. My, my children can if it means we're in person five days a week and we're in a good spot there. We have been continuing to advocate for the state for what I refer to as an off-ramp. What are the metrics we need so we can share with our students, our faculty, and our community on what metrics need to be in place for us to start shifting our protocols and opening back up a little more. All students are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccination. That's a family decision, but we put that out there. Right now, the biggest piece is the Monroe County Department of Health does quarantine if there's a close contact unless, unless you're vaccinated. If you are vaccinated, the rules are in New York State that you wouldn't be quarantined. You would have to monitor your symptoms and as long as you're wearing a mask, which you have to in school, you could keep coming to school. I assure this last piece is in italics, is that the Monroe County Department of Health has started putting stuff out that they're planning, really through a state program, to find a way to send rapid test kits home to families with each student. And we're working through, what does that look like? Is it a pickup? Is it, is it backpacks? How do we get that out there? There is no, there is no like school district rule. We end up being the middleman of getting rapid tests out before the holiday break. And the purpose in this information will continue to come out from the Department of Health in Monroe County, and then we'll share at schools, is it's really for families to use as they see fit. If they're worried about going with a grandparent, they could utilize that test at home for free just to see. The test results of those kits coming home are not, are not reported to the school. It's really for families to use as they see fit. So some will like that, others may not need them. And we've gotta work through a process on how we get that information out. So more to come on that, but I wanted to share it as it's being discussed from the County Department of Health. Just a reminder, I did share this slide last, last board meeting, a little different. But we really have three testing programs happening in our schools. There's the school surveillance testing. That's the rapid antigen test. That's happening about 5% to 10% of our students whose parents opted them in. So if parents wanted their children to be opted in to surveillance testing, about 5% to 10% of the students who opted in get called down and get tested. Again, that's an opt-in process. We also have Test to Stay, which we rolled out on December 1st. Last Wednesday was our first day. Our district is doing it. We are actually one of the first to jump in to Test to Stay. And the purpose there really is around our asymptomatic students who are unvaccinated, who are on a mandatory quarantine from the Department of Health, that we can get them back in school sooner. And so we're working through that process. It's been successful. Students that would have been on quarantine and missed like seven days of school can actually come to school, test every morning, stay in school. And we're finding success with that, in the sense our goal is to keep kids in school and not have them home. And so the only piece with this is that we originally were able to share from the County Department of Health that that included any after-school activities, athletics, musical, those pieces, which we believe strongly through the SEL lens are part of our academic day. New York State Department of Health clarified across the state that the Test to Stay language, to get out of quarantine to come to school, doesn't, doesn't include outside-of-school activity. So it's just coming to school. So it's great to get kids back in school. We're continuing to advocate that if they take a rapid test in the morning and they're negative, that they should be able to stay after school to be a part of clubs, activities, and sports. But as of now, that's a New York State clarification of that rule. And we're continuing to see what we can do to change that. And then the last is return to school. So we started this morning at 9:00 AM, the rapid PCR. The purpose of rapid PCR is schools have an option. So schools do not have to allow Test to Stay. And they also do not have to set up a rapid PCR clinic. Penfield jumped on to both of these because again, our goal is to get kids in school and keep them in school. So this allows students who had a symptom, who had to go home from the nurse's office, to come in and get a PCR test to be able to come back to school quickly. And that option's always been there. You go to your pharmacy or your doctor and you get a PCR test. Then it takes, you know, sometimes 24 hours and sometimes three days to get a result. This rapid PCR process we have in place takes about 30 minutes. So once you put the sample in, it takes about 30 minutes. I think, I'll turn to Dr. Kenny. I think I heard we had our very first day about 30, about 30 students utilize this.
That's correct.
So, so again, those are kids who would have maybe had to wait three or four days to get back to school, are coming back to school tomorrow if they tested negative. And that's again, a great thing. We're doing everything we can to try to keep kids in school. So a return to school, just an update, this rapid PCR I just talked about. It did just start today. It is, the purpose again is to allow students who had symptoms but are feeling better to return to school in a timely fashion. The rapid PCR testing runs from 9:00 AM to 3:45 Tuesday through Friday at the district office. You just show up, call the number, and then a nurse actually comes out to your car, takes a sample, and then you get a call. And we let you know hopefully that it was negative and you can come to school the next day. Option provides families with another avenue to receive a PCR test. You don't need to do that. You can go to your own doctor. You can go to wherever you want to go, but it's an option for families. And then under review, new guidance has come out from the New York State Department of Health, which may allow schools to use that rapid antigen test instead of a PCR. So really, that doesn't change anything for students, but it means that instead of 30 minutes for a test result, we could get test results in 15 minutes. So we can just move faster and get kids back into school as long as they, as long as they test negative. So we're working through that. We may update after the holiday coming up that we might be able to shift to the use of rapid antigen tests. There we go. Speaking of holiday recess. As a reminder, the last day for students is calendar year will be Wednesday, December 22nd. I note that. I don't always, but I note it because there are many districts that their last day is actually the December 23rd. So we did start a little earlier, but we actually are, in certain spots have days off when other districts don't. So just as a reminder, no school on December 23rd for our students. Our last day is Wednesday, 22nd. That holiday recess will run therefore from December 23rd through January 2nd, which is a Sunday. And the first day back to school is gonna be January 3rd in the year 2022, which I'm really hoping is gonna be a much better year. And then Ms. Harvey mentioned winter concerts. I just wanna put a plug in too, some great photos of our winter concerts. These are things we take for granted as a district, or took for granted as a district, as a community, as parents of a musician, myself, is that, you know, we're back in person. It looks a little different, but my gosh, it was awesome to sit in the auditorium and watch my, watch one of my kids play. And they are in person for families, and they're also livestreamed to the community. I didn't put a list of all of the concerts or try to explain the link, but if you go right to our web page, right on the front page is the holiday concert article. And it lists all of our upcoming concerts as well as the link to be able to log on and watch the community stream or watch the concert. So very, very great. And I know our students are excited, our teachers are excited. And I can tell you, the families, just speaking as one, was awesome again to sit in the audience and listen. And my last update is just a reminder around a special vote, which is a week from today. It's the 2021 Transportation Facilities Project Vote. We'll be holding it in the Penfield High School gym right down the hall. From 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, we encourage our community to be informed. We have lots of information online, information that went out in the prestige. Dr. Driffl is here. If there's budget questions, he's always happy to answer. Just pick up the phone, call him, or drop him an email. Myself, anytime. Board members as well. If you've got questions, please reach out. But just really a lot of information. All of our PowerPoint presentations, videos of the two community meetings we had are all online under our 2020-21 Transportation Facility Project page. So please take a look and just be informed. And again, that vote is next Tuesday, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM here at Penfield High School. And I think that was my last slide, but if anybody has questions, otherwise I'll turn it to Dr. Driffl.
Board members, any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So in September, I signed both my children up for the school surveillance testing, but now they've both received their second vaccines. What do you recommend we do? Do we opt out now or do we keep in or?
You, you don't have to do anything. You could call the nurse at the child school and let them know because we shouldn't be doing rapid testing if you've had the vaccine or COVID within a certain number of days. So you could call the nurse and let them know. The nurse does have that information on vaccination status. And so the student should come off of that test. If they were tested for any reason and it was a positive and the fact was that they had the vaccination recently or for other people had COVID recently, then it would be a conversation and a retest. But I would think it's just good to just call or drop an email to the nurse and let them know.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, there was a couple of questions.
No, that's a great question. And, and we did opt in for people who wanted to do the surveillance testing. But they can always opt out anytime for any reason.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So just reach right out directly to the nurse at each building who maintains that list.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Can you speak up a little more?
Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
Can you hear me now? The cell reception in this building can be a little spotty, so. Good evening, Board. Good evening, Penfield Learning Community. A couple of updates for the Board tonight from the business office. First of which is our annual reserve fund plan document. Starting off with just the general synopsis of our reserve levels over the last five years. We ended the fiscal year 2020-2021, this past June 30th, at $43 million in total fund balance. You can see that we took a big jump kind of in the 1920 year. That was the COVID shutdown year, so a lot of operations stopped. So we had a little extra money there. And then we tacked on a little bit in this last fiscal year. Breaking down what that looked like across all of our reserve plans on June 30th in table format and then a pie chart. We had $660,000 in our workers' compensation reserve, $500,000 in our unemployment insurance reserve, $7.5 million in our ERS retirement reserve. TRS retirement reserve had just shy of $1.5 million. Our liability reserve is also at $1.4 million. Our tax tertiary reserve stands at $1.6 million. Our EBOLR reserve, which is the Employee Benefits Accrued Liability Reserve, is just under $300,000. And then all of our capital reserves. So we have $6 million in a 2014 capital reserve. We have $14.3 million in our 2016 capital reserve. Those are the two that are earmarked for the project funding. At the vote next week that Dr. Putnam mentioned. $4.7 million in our newly authorized $4.7 million in our newly authorized 2021 capital reserve for buildings and then $4.5 million in our bus reserve. It's important to note that of all of these funds, the only operational funds, funds that are actually available to be a supplement to the general fund budget are those top four. Workers' compensation, unemployment, and the two retirement reserves. So that represents about 25% of the reserves, about $10 million or so. The pie chart just quickly shows that most of the reserves are locked up in capital reserve funds, which go towards future projects. So we'll spend a couple of minutes kind of walking through all of these reserves to add a little bit more context to each. The workers' compensation reserve has been very stable over the last five years. Generally, we try to keep this reserve at around one years of our annual premiums to the workers' compensation consortium that we participate in. The funding at $660,000 this year represents a little over one year of workers' compensation premiums, which last year went down to about $550,000. So in the report in your packet this evening, it articulates that we think that the funding for that reserve is at an appropriate level. The unemployment insurance reserve went up significantly at the end of the 2019-2020 year because that was when we were starting to reopen from the COVID shutdowns in the spring there. And it was a little precarious around state aid cuts and what the employment situation was going to look like. So we took the risk mitigation effort to put a little bit more money there. Now that some of the effects, at least on the employment side of COVID, have kind of stabilized a little bit, we withdrew some of the funds year on this year and decreased that a little bit. Same thing with the ERS retirement reserve. In the spring of 2020, we were very cautious given the stock market returns and the volatility that was happening there and the increase in retirements that we're seeing around the state. So we set aside a little bit more money that year. This year, we peeled it down a little bit as things looked to stabilize. And the ERS employee contribution rate, which we discussed at our last meeting, has decreased significantly this year. The TRS retirement reserve is a newly authorized reserve from New York State. This works different than every other reserve because it's limited by legislative statute, by law, how much we can put into it on an annual basis. So we adopted this two years ago. We've put in the max amount that we can. It's 2% of prior year instructional earnings. So it's about $700,000 a year, which brings us over the course of those two years to $1.4 million. The plan for this articulated in the report is to continue funding it over the course of the next three years to its authorized level. Tax tertiary protects us from cases that are brought forth regarding assessments from commercial properties. We take a look to see what our total outstanding liability could be on an annual basis and then compare it to the funding levels. Typically, we try to keep the funding levels at least 50% of the outstanding liabilities. We're currently sitting at about 66% of outstanding liabilities. So keeping it stable year over year. We had a couple of claims last year, but only about $40,000 or so. The EBLR reserve, again, that's the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve. This is due, it increased a little bit this year, but it's still by far our smallest reserve at $300,000. This is one of the reserves where we can actually match one of our long-term liabilities on our audited financial statements. So it just makes sense on an annual basis to match that liability to this funding level. Jumping over into the capital reserves. As I mentioned, the 2014 capital reserve, which sits at just about $6 million, will be wholly devoted to the new 2021 Transportation Facilities Project that we have up for community referendum next week. If that vote is successful, this reserve will be liquidated and goes away. Same with the 2016 capital reserve. The only reason it decreased a little bit this year is because we expended via community authorization back in May, a land purchase, which is associated with next week's project vote. Again, like the 2014 capital reserve, if the vote is successful next Tuesday, this reserve would be liquidated as well and spent on the project. And then that brings us to our newly authorized 2021 capital reserve, where we put a little bit of year-end money this year. This will go towards future project planning in the fall of 2022. Next year, we have to do our next building condition survey, which will identify our five-year capital plans. So the money associated with this reserve will go towards a future project somewhere three, four, or five years down the line. And then finally, our bus purchase reserve. It is a fully funded reserve, but it's still at adequate levels given our typical fleet replacement schedule. We spent $700,000 on buses with community approval back in May. And we're looking now to see if we need to continue with our bus replacement schedule based on the abbreviated mileage that we've had the last two years. Potentially an option to maybe pause or amend our plan a little bit, but much more to come on that later in the spring. Tonight, board, we are required by law to furnish you with information regarding the tax levy collection report. So the tax collection process this year went fantastic. I really want to give a special thank you to the four towns that collect on our behalf for their partnership and expertise, Penfield, Perrington, Pittsburgh, and Brighton. We collected a little over 98% of the tax levy this year, which is slightly above average. In accordance with law, the remaining portion is now surrendered over to the town and county and re-leveied come spring. Easement agreement. So back in what we think is about 1960, we had an agreement with the town of Brighton over at Indian Landing Elementary School to provide them an easement for maintenance of the stormwater drainage back behind the building. In the 2018 capital project, we had to do some work with that system and we couldn't locate the documentation associated with the agreement. So the town asked us to go back and actually submit a formal request based on the common understandings. So all this does is once again formalize an agreement that has been in place for 60 some odd years. We expect the town to take approval on this at their meeting tomorrow night if the board approves it this evening. And finally, just a reminder, another reminder. As Dr. Putnam mentioned, we have our 2021 Transportation Facilities Project Vote next Tuesday from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. here over in Penfield High School's gymnasium. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Board members, any questions or comments? So I just wanted to, Dr. Driffl, I just wanted to clarify, you know, the capital reserves, those are, the nomenclature is the year in which that reserve is approved, not for which the intent of use is.
Yep, that's correct. So when the community authorized the creation of the reserve, that's the year that's associated with the title of the account.
Right. So an holder reserve could be used for a current project. That's the way it was intended.
Correct. Yep. Typically, they have a 10-year window.
Thank you. That's it.
That concludes superintendent's reports. And a thank you to Dr. Driffl as we enter into regular updates as we plan for the following school year budget vote way off in May. We appreciate that and appreciate the transparency. And again, that concludes superintendent reports. Mark.
Thank you, Tom. So Dr. Driffl just mentioned the easement to the town of Brighton, where we have to reauthorize that or reapprove it. So I'll just read the resolution. Whereas in or about 1960, the Penfield Central School District granted an easement to the town of Brighton for stormwater main purposes at 700 North Landing Road, Town of Brighton, New York, 14625. And whereas the easement is more particularly described in Schedule A attached year two and pursuant to the easement. And around the time of the easement, the town used the easement at the property for stormwater maintenance purposes. And whereas the district granted the easement, and the town has consistently used and maintained the easement for the stormwater main purposes. Whereas the course of the district's recent construction activities at the property, it was discovered that the easement was not properly documented. Whereas the town had asked the district to prepare and file all necessary papers to properly document the easement. And therefore, the board resolves it is in the best interest of the district to properly document the easement as requested by the town. And further resolves that the deputy superintendent of the district is authorized to execute all necessary papers to properly document this easement. We have a motion and a second that this be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. The approval of the annual report and the reserve funding in use. Board Policy 5630 requires that the Board of Education conduct an annual review of all reserve funds. In addition to this review, this information is also included as part of the annual budget presentations during the budget process. Regular review of the important aspect of the district's finances is intended to ensure transparency for the processes, for the process and to assist the board in making the necessary decisions to adequately fund all reserves, manage the fund balances, and ensure overall budgetary integrity of the school district. This report, updated December 7th, 2021, has been submitted to the board review. So we have a motion and a second that the Board of Education hereby approves the annual reserve plan and that the presented recommendations and directs the recommendations for reserve use to be incorporated into the 2022-23 budget planning process.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Property tax collection status. As of November of each year, the town tax collectors have finalized their property tax collections for the school levy and remitted all funds collected to the school district and submitted all unpaid bills to the county. Attached to the status of the Penfield Central School District tax levy authorized by the board on August 10th, 2021, additions and cancellations to the authorization levy and collections through November 30th, 2021. So we have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves the 2021-22 property tax collection status, including all additions and cancellations made to the original approved levy amount.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now with the Medicaid compliance plan. Penfield's Medicaid compliance program must be certified annually by December 31st. The board has reviewed the compliance program self-assessment tool developed by the Office of Medicaid Inspector General. The document has been reviewed by the District Medicaid Compliance Committee, and no substantive changes have been made from prior years. Approval is recommended. So we have a motion and a second that the board recertify the Medicaid compliance plan as presented above.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So we have policy for first read. We have seven of them of all these regulations. So policies are limiting disclosure of student directory information, concussion management, child abuse and neglect maltreatment, complaints and grievances by students, and sexual harassment of students. So would someone like to present?
I would love to. So on behalf of the policy committee, just as a reminder that this is part of the Board of Education's five-year review. So every five years, they start again and start reviewing policies. There are eight sections of our policy, district policy manual. Each section by the 1,000s, 2,000, 3,000s, all the way through 8,000s have a different area of focus, whether it's facilities or instruction. The 7,000 series that you'll see all of these policies fall in because that's where we are in the five-year review, is focused on students. So 7260 is limited disclosure of student directory information. And that really focuses around how we share information out about students, whether it be the media wanting a photograph or when we publish our list of students who made honor roll. That's all considered directory information. The policy committee is bringing to the board and the community for review a shift in the process. If you want to, as a parent, opt your child out of that directory information, such as social media posts, things like that, or photos and videos. Instead of the sort of opt-out where you have to reach out to us, if this policy change goes into play at the next meeting, when it's read and looked at for a board for review, it would be, principals would be sending out an email every year to all their families and we'd be collecting the opt-out information through a Microsoft form to try to be more forward and proactive with that. We also, as the policy committee said, that they want to review this policy again next year instead of waiting through the five-year policy cycle. They want to look at the data of how many opt-outs we have from families that may not want social media or pictures used for like our webpage and things like that. And so we would be reviewing that again, or the policy committee would be reviewing that again. We also updated, there is federal law around the military. And, you know, we are required as a public school, any school that collects federal funds or takes federal funds does have to release information to about students who are 18 or about to the military. And families do have the ability to opt out. So we clarified that language and how to opt out for that as your child becomes a high school junior and senior. Again, that's first review. So this is up. These are up on our webpage under policies under review. And we welcome comments, or the school board welcomes comments that will be brought back to the policy committee. 7522 is concussion management. Very important. About 10 years ago, lots of work was done on concussions. And there's really three areas with that. It's return to play for athletics, return to activity for any activity in the school, such as PE class. And then return to learn, which is, you know, when we have a concussion, it might look like we're okay, but the impact on schoolwork. And so we really need to review that. So the policy itself, we're going to use the Erie Policy Service, which is the most updated, follows all of the state and federal mandates around concussion management, and we're going to use that. But we also are going to go back, the policy committee asked, and we're going to go back to have a district-wide committee that would involve multiple stakeholders. So just review that, return to learn and return to play. Make sure that we're doing the best we can for students who are suffering from a concussion and make sure that we're supporting families and students, especially in the return to learn. We have a really good system with our current athletics in terms of the process. They know if they play a contact sport, how to take the concussion management test and how to monitor that. It's a little bit more difficult in the classroom and how we make sure that all staff knows that a student is suffering from a concussion and how we can support them. It's really easy when you have a broken leg because everybody can see you have a broken leg and you need an elevator pass. The concussions are different. You can't see it, but we want to make sure that our staff is supported with the best ways to manage each individual student. So we'll be looking at that in a separate committee and we'll come back to the board with our regulations. But the policy itself is utilizing the Erie Policy Service updated policy. Child abuse and neglect is 7530. Obviously, something very important in the day and age we live in. We have updated using the Erie One Policy Services policy in place of our current policy due to amendments of education law, expanded required reporting, greater training for covered reporters, and changes to various definitions. So instead of trying to rewrite all of the policy to fit ours, we decide as the policy committee, it would be best to utilize the legal and policy services Erie One that the school district and the board subscribe to. 7550 is complaints and grievances by students and that some minor changes expanded the definitions and descriptions of discrimination to align with existing law. And then 7551 is sexual harassment of students. Again, based on the importance of this, we're using Erie Policy Services policy in place of our current policy. They're very similar, but it's just more straightforward and transparent. Instead of trying to tweak ours to say we're going to utilize Erie's as it stands. It's the most up-to-date and meets the letter of all laws. Erie reviewed this policy with all nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policies in light of recent revisions to the regulations of Title IX and to create consistency between this policy and the other nondiscrimination and anti-harassment policies. So these are all for first read. Again, they're up online. Community can look at them. Board can look at them and any feedback you can send directly to the board itself or to me as superintendent, and I'll bring them to the next policy committee meeting. Policy committee, did I do a good job reviewing those, at least overview? Thank you. That's it?
That's it. Brings us to visitor speaking time. We, as a board, appreciate the comments of the community We, as a Board, appreciate the comments of the community during the public session of the Board meeting. Every individual speaks that has a vested, that speaks that has a vested interest in the education of our students. Your comments are important to us. Matters involving particular individuals or specifics of negotiations are not permitted during public session. Concerns raised will be referred to the district administration for follow-up or action when appropriate. Visitors may sign up to speak at the meeting, at a meeting by emailing the district clerk, Sharon Urquhart, with her name, address, phone number and topic they wish to address. Registration will be open at eight AM on the Friday before the meeting and remain open until three PM on the Tuesday of the Board meeting. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their time to three minutes or less. A total of thirty minutes will be allotted for visitor speaking time. The Board will not be responding to comments during the session, but please be assured we are listening. Finally, we ask that speakers model the conduct we expect from our students in school daily. Please be respectful of others in your words, actions and demuners. Thank you. So the first speaker is Andrew Dilag. Hello, Mr. Dilag, please state your name and address.
My name is Andrew Dilag. I live at one-eighty Lynx Court. Good evening. My name is Dr. Andrew Dilag. I'm the father of Lucas Dilag, a first grader at Harris Hill. My wife and I are both pediatricians, so I just want to thank you for all the work you've done to keep our kids safe during this pandemic. And Lucas was in line this morning to get a PCR test and met Dr. Putnam in the way. I'm here because I'm concerned about the social media policy as it pertains to our youngest students in the district. I've reviewed the first read policy, which I do not believe has appreciably changed and as written does not adequately protect the privacy of students. Briefly, this issue came about when I found images of my son on his teacher's public Twitter account earlier this year. They were images of him eating snack outside and were time stamped and geo-tagged with where he was and when he was for anyone to see at that time. We promptly brought this issue up and opted out, but I'm disappointed to inform you that the schoolteachers and administrators were not able to enforce this opt-out on three separate occasions. After the opt-out, his image appeared again on Twitter, once in a video shot and posted by the principal, then again on YouTube in another video. There are several issues with the policy as written. First, the policy as written is vague. It only states that images will be taken for district purposes without delineating what those are. It says nothing about individual teachers taking pictures on their own personal devices, which is also a liability, and posting regular classroom activities. To me, district purposes includes public outings such as graduations, concerts, plays and sports events that are open to the general public. Those are appropriate public venues where images can be taken and posted because there's no expectation of privacy when you engage in such activities. I cannot emphasize enough that normal classroom activities do not fall into this category as they are not open to the public and anybody can't just go into school and start taking pictures of students without permission. Second, as a parent and pediatrician, I'm shocked that the district policy is such that you can post an image of a child on social media without the parental, their parents' explicit consent. The way the policy is written, parental consent is implied and I and all of my colleagues are appalled that the district would assume implied consent, that their image could be posted on social media without them knowing or having any control of the content. It needs to be an active choice to make, they make to have their child's picture on social media. Those pictures can be harvested and used by anybody for any purpose and in the age of facial recognition and other matters, it could become a big problem. You don't want to wait for an incident to happen before you take proactive action. Third, the lack of consistent enforcement of this policy is of great concern for the reasons that I outlined above. I shouldn't have to monitor social media accounts of teachers or principals and be the policeman because they can't respect our willingness and our right to opt out. There are several instances where the names of other students are online. The students are pulling down their masks for photo opportunities in class. This is clearly a violation and needs to change. And fourth, social media posts are not educational records, as I understand FERPA. It shouldn't be lumped in with other FERPA policies. It needs its own separate policy. We are all aligned in wanting what's best for our student's safety and privacy online. I believe the current policy falls short.
Thank you, Mr. Dilag.
I'd like to engage in a committee. I'd be happy to be a parent representative. Thanks for your time. I'll follow up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Charles Healy. Yes, hello, Mr. Healy, please state your name and address.
Yes, Charles or CJ Healy. I live at eleven Waterbury Lane, town of Penfield. So let me begin by thanking the Board members for their service. I know it's a huge time commitment that you each make, so thank you for that. I've had a child in the Penfield High School now for the last six years. During this time, from my perspective, there's been a noticeable decline in the workload expectations placed on our children. When my son entered high school, he was expected to read at least one book in English and history over the summer. Now, as far as I know, teachers are prohibited from asking students to read anything over the summer. Summer's one thing, but it also seems to me that teachers are strongly discouraged from assigning homework during breaks, which there are many, of course, during the school year. We owe it to both our children and of course our society to develop each child to their fullest extent of their abilities. Our brains are our most precious muscles and to fully develop our muscles, we need to exercise them to their limits. In a perfect world, we'd have, you know, a customized education plan that challenges each child perfectly to their limit. Of course, a public high school can't provide that. But a large high school with significant resources such as Penfield can certainly provide two or three different levels of instruction in core subject areas when each grades over three hundred students now. I'm very surprised and upset that the Board has supported the decision to eliminate honors level instruction in a core subject area such as English. I don't know why we would want students that may be struggling to kind of meet grade, minimum grade level expectations to be placed in the same class as those students that are performing at a much more advanced level. It's not fair to the students or the teachers. Why would we do this when we can easily offer differentiated levels? Seems to me teachers are going to have to teach and give assignments at the level of those students that are kind of near the low end of the range of ability in that subject area, so those students aren't lost. Obviously, those students that have the capacity for much more advanced work are not going to be fully developed to their potential. I don't come here, you know, with the intention to offend anyone, but it seems to me that we've kind of allowed ourselves to get kind of carried away with vague concepts such as equity, that we're doing things that defy common sense, such as eliminating honors in advanced placement classes in core subject areas. We seem to be reducing work expectations, perhaps because we think it somehow improves emotional well-being. I urge the school board, you know, to reconsider this direction and consider a renewed focus on academic, academic rigor and excellence. Please ensure that the school is providing as many opportunities as possible to provide multiple levels of difficulty in core subject areas so that each child can be appropriately challenged to make the most of their individual abilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Next is Nick Vessa. You want to go before him?
Yeah.
That's fine. And... Oh, Michelle, okay. Michelle Colas, so please state your name and address.
Michelle Colas, one-thirty-four Wedgewood Drive. I am here to discuss the reclassification of the robotics team. The robotics team is classified here as a club and is set up, funded and provided as things as such. However, the time commitment, leader roles and skill outcomes from the program do not align with our typical clubs here at, or at Penfield. Leader roles, they don't, they don't align. There's a lot of different clubs that we have and the robotics team should not be considered a club. And for the robotics team, robotics group to remain the high standards, quality of instruction and real-life valuable skills gained for this award-winning team who is ranked third in the world, things need to change. The change needs to be first in the classification of the group. It is much more than a club, but cannot check off all the boxes as a sports team. However, three key areas need to be addressed. Creating a new classification and definition for the group, mainly robotics, will give everything the group needs to provide success for our students. What we're proposing is the rename of competitive co-curricular club. This is a new term. First, to be a competitive club, there are competitions. These competitions need to be funded and managed by the school. Second, a co-curricular, which means the level of academics and skills needed for the future are taught and practiced for real life, led by coaches who have the commitment and experience or willingness to learn. These are not advisors and should be aligned with coaches in how they are viewed and paid. Finally, the space. In order to do all the things required for a group of this level, space needs to be provided with adequate storage. Robotics takes up much space and for the students to meet, work on large projects and store valuable things for engineering as well as multiple robots safely, can a team function not knowing where they're going to practice today? Or to have to change practice because the state, space is being used by someone else? It makes it very difficult when you have fifty kids needing to practice all at the same time and someone else is using the space. Robotics has practices. It may not look like a sports team's practice, but that is what they do. Again, changing the classification to match the program. As a parent of one of the student leaders on the team, as well as the founder and instructor of a global teen leadership program, I know the importance of leadership soft skills in the world. There are many statistics from colleges as well as companies stating how soft skills affect the quality of employees. Many people are passed over for jobs or let go due mainly to these lack of skills. These skills are a key foundation of what the robotics group teaches. The students not only learn practical, real-life skills, but use these skills globally to be the award-winning team that have, they have been for a while. I cannot express in the short time that I have the value my son, who is now a junior, has learned over the past few years. Keep in mind, we have been in COVID, right? And to be able to do it in the last few years is invaluable. We want parents, we, we as parents want that to continue and the students need it to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up will be Nick Vessa. Hello, Mr. Vessa, please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Nick Vessa and I live at thirty-two Pennycott Circle in Penfield, New York. On the robotics team, we, the students, own the team. We are very proud to be a student-run team and we value the partnerships we hold with our mentors. We are driving the design decisions, choosing which demos and events we want to run or attend and most of how the team operates in general, with mentors providing training, guidance, recommendations and support to help us be successful with our initiatives. This allows us to really mold the team into what we want and learn from our mistakes as opposed to having adults do everything for us. One of the wonderful things about FIRST is that we do the work ourselves in collaboration with the mentors that inspire and guide us. We have mentors from L3 Harris and a couple other local companies. There's a professional relationship between the mentors and the students on the team and a core part of what makes this work is respect. Students give respect to the mentors in their time and the mentors respect the students and really listen to what they have to say. Working side by side with the mentors allows them to pass their knowledge on to us in a way that is more like working with a colleague as opposed to being talked down to. I don't think I'd be where I am today without having what I learned from the robotics team and the diverse group of mentors on it. We have this saying that we're more than just robots and that couldn't be more true. Beyond robots, we do marketing, media, public speaking, advocacy, community service and leadership training, just to name a few. In my three years on the team so far, I've developed as a leader and I've become kinder, more helpful and an all-around better person. I feel that these soft skills have really put me ahead of my peers. As a student, I know we put in lots of effort to build our robot, organize events and mentor our younger students in elementary and middle schools. This, there is one group of people on the team whose effort even surpasses ours. These people would be our mentors and teacher advisors. They give up their time after work, their weekends and even time with their family to be with us and to guide us in our endeavors. They're constantly there for the same amount of time as we are, if not longer, constantly working behind the scenes to make sure everything is running smoothly and we're staying on track. I know I speak for the whole team when I say this, but they do not get the credit they deserve. In fact, there's probably a bunch of them upstairs in the shop right now giving up their Tuesday night for the team and the students on it. I think it speaks volumes how they really believe in us, the program and the community benefits to the point where they're giving up their time to be with their families. Truly, we cannot thank them enough for what they do. They're more than just advisors, more than coaches. They are our mentors, not just teaching us about engineering concepts, but how to be better people and you can't put a price on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vessa.
Thank you.
Next up is Michael Vessa. Hello, Mr. Vessa, please state your name and address.
Michael Vessa, can you hear me? Pennycott Circle. Again, just kind of following what my son said here. In my experience, parent volunteer, I've seen how much effort both the students and mentors are putting in. I've experienced the passion and the excitement that these kids are getting from going to regional and national competitions. During the build season, my son is very involved and I take him to and from meetings and participate in many of the competitions where they're helping set up or actually announce each match these kids participate in. My son is there four to five nights a week during build season, which means so are the mentors and the teacher advisors, as we mentioned prior. I know both Mr. Wisebroad and Mr. Pizzo personally. They are stand-up teachers. They enjoy his team and the students and they are both generally awesome guys who have taught my son a lot. Penfield Robotics Team has given my son direction on what, on where he wants to take his career and instilled in him values, moral standards and organizational skills that he can take with him no matter where he goes in life. Skills like this are beyond valuable and cannot be taught in most classes or for that matter on a sports team. However, the Penfield Robotics Team does all this and more. I ask you as a parent, we would like to continue to have this quality of effort put in forth by the teachers who are actually representing the team and have some passion for this team and what they do and then not have everyone there from their perspective. We talk about inclusiveness at this school district. Sports teams have to cut people because they may not be good athletes. They may not be physically able to endure the rough play of a sport. I was one of those kids in school who tried out for sports teams but did not make it due to my ability. Had there been a team like Penfield Robotics, I would have been quick to join. Penfield Robotics represents inclusivity and others and does not discriminate against anyone based on anything. They welcome everyone and do not have caps on team size. So I ask, wouldn't we want to keep the whole, keep the whole team, an organization like this, with the right people involved like the teachers we have currently? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vessa. Next up is Larissa Croup. Larissa Croup, okay. Good evening, Ms. Croup, please state your name and address.
It's Larissa Croup and it's fifteen Suites View Lane. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As you know, today marks the eightieth anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. Our nation is grateful to those who sacrificed all to protect our freedom. I pray that we will continue to have the freedoms that are upheld through our God-given rights under the U.S. Constitution. I'm here today because I'm deeply concerned about a tenured teacher who was recently served a thirty-twenty termination hearing notice. I personally know this teacher as both of my children were taught by him and he is well-loved by students, soccer players, parents and the Penfield School community. He's been an exemplary teacher and a picture of health, a great role model and dedicated teacher for thirty years, who has impacted the lives of many through his teaching and coaching, a teacher who has maintained positive relationships with families through the years. I truly appreciate and admire this teacher's courage to stand up for what he believes in, something that many throughout the world aspire to, but many who are too scared or uncomfortable to share their thoughts, questions and concerns publicly. We're in a time where critical thinking and common sense has gone to the wayside. I question the fact as to why individuals who either have natural immunity or who choose to not take a vaccine due to their medical or religious beliefs are subjected to discrimination. The evidence shows that naturally acquired immunity is equal to or more robust and superior to existing vaccines. Instead, we should respect the right of the bodily... Instead, we should respect the right of the bodily integrity of individuals to decide for themselves. The Brownstone Institute has just published a comprehensive article that showcases 140 research studies from around the world that affirm naturally-acquired immunity to COVID-19. Please do the research. I also question the fact that only the unvaccinated teachers and staff are subjected to weekly COVID testing, despite the fact that they may have natural immunity and that they are healthy individuals. Why aren't the vaccinated not being tested? Also, it has been proven that they can still get COVID-19 and spread it. I call this medical discrimination. It has been noted that PCR tests do create false positives. I've heard multiple stories of people and students alike who were quarantined due to a false positive. In particular, an individual who then tested five times negative after the fact and had to stand up to the DOH to be released from a false quarantine. This false quarantine impacted over 20 students that were part of the false positive testing pool. We're in a situation where money supersedes morals and ethics. People who've lost their moral compass from accepting COVID money that would continue to massacre children and more. We have a leader of our own DOH who, as documented, has been seen visiting crowded bars maskless, and yet our children do not have a choice while in school. The same rules do not apply to those at the top. I'm witnessing, excuse me, firsthand that the unvaccinated are now the new official intervention of subhumans.
Next up is John Tagus.
My name is Ionis Tagus, I go by John. I'd first like to thank each board member for allowing me this opportunity. And to make it short and brief, she could take my two minutes, I'll be one minute, okay? As far as this whole thing goes, I'm here to represent Mr. Quinn personally, as a friend, as a coach.
Excuse me, we do not speak by any specific person.
I'm sorry. This is my first time, and I'm a little upset by board members who are parents and individuals themselves. That someone who started to talk, and I know you have a three-minute limit and you've written this down, well, we've all been patiently waiting to describe our situations. This gentleman seems to have been terminated. I have three boys that went to this elementary school, middle school, and high school. Individually speaking, I have had many relationships with many teachers, principals, throughout the three schools. And with them, I've noticed that they are concerned about the student, whether they're an athlete or through education. And for us to say what's right or wrong, especially in your seats, on with this vaccine and not vaccine, you cannot. And no one knows the right, correct answer. But you cannot terminate somebody because they're taking a stand for themselves. And with that, my three boys have personally told me to tell the board they have found that gentleman not only as a coach, as a friend, but also as a mentor, through his education at his school or off the individual field. He has cared for him like I would want a teacher to care for him. So with that, I wish you would reconsider and actually have the parents, ask the parents what they feel about the situation, not him personally, but in general, about your policy towards that. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tagus. All right, this concludes visitor's speaking time. Okay, next up is the Monroe County School Association Committee Meetings. The first up, the first up is the Legislative Committee. And so I attended, yeah, no, I know. Normally Catherine is there with me, and she takes copious notes, so I'm going to do the best I can.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I couldn't make it.
That's quite all right. The, what we discovered at the, discussed at the Legislative Committee Meeting, one of the things has to do with the federal infrastructure bill. I mean, New York State gets a certain amount of money. One of the things that Congressman Morelli is focusing on is making sure we have funding for improved access to broadband, which will help close the homework gap. The SED is also working on educator certificate reform. You know, we always talk about shortage of qualified educators. The, you know, they're looking at this through a number of approaches. One is to address, you know, the purpose is to address the teacher shortage. They're looking to address the complex array of type certificates. Some, they have different tiers of qualification, they have different subject areas, and so they're trying to simplify that. They have already updated the policies on reciprocity and coursework requirements. And they have made procedural changes to streamline the process of getting a certificate that include, to, again, try to address this, and so they are continuing to work on this. On December 8th, there's going to be an opportunity to virtually attend the New York State Education Department meeting on graduation measures. That's a Zoom meeting, and I can provide more information on that as well. And actually, it's on the, I think, the SED front page, if you want to get more information on that. The State Aid Committee has talked about their conceptual framework for the next year's Regent State Aid Proposal, and again, this goes, ties back into the phase end of the Foundation Aid to make sure we're fully funded, and the increasing access and opportunity through expansion of the BOSI's aid, as well as increasing opportunity through special aid enhancements and digital equity and through instructional material aids. I also forward you the information regarding the upcoming Zoom meeting with our representatives, which is on December 14th. And hope, and again, since it's Zoom, I hope people can attend.
Yeah, with the Zoom meetings, I know that it's so much easier for the legislators, you know, and then we have more contact with them, and that more interaction, which we've been working on for quite a few years.
That's correct. And it's also, it's, and it's, in this case, it's not just our representative, it's a number of the local representatives, which helps because they all can hear each other, they can, they can build off each other's comments. But they also have representatives from other districts as well, so they hear the group voice speaking to them on what, what are their issues today. So that's the Legislative Committee.
Thanks for covering that for me, Mark.
Catherine, you always do such a good job at trying to stand up to that. The, I'm just looking here. Community Committee Meetings, okay, okay. I'm sorry, bear with me a second. Okay, next is the DEI Core Committee Meeting. And Ms. Potter is going to speak to that.
I think it's Emily and Sean. Oh, sorry. Go ahead. Oh, you guys have this taken care of. I'm going to go home. All right.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just provide a brief update from our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Core Team meeting last evening. We spent some time revisiting a couple of documents that we have done some updates and some revisions for. One of them is our discriminatory and harmful languages, harmful language practices and a protocol that we're using to support discriminatory and harmful language. We also brought back to the committee something that we've been working on over the past several months, our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Statement. And so our DEI statement, we will be putting that out on our webpage, just so that we can have the community really understand how we view ourselves relative to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It helps to create a statement of what we stand for here in Penfield. The other thing that we did dig into last night was some action planning, and we wanted to think beyond this year and maybe create an opportunity to think long-term for some of the actions that we'd like to take relative to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We also had Sheena Conway, our Director for Humanities, and Kevin Marriott, our Assistant Director for Professional Learning, provide an update of their DEI Subcommittee, which is professional learning. And they shared with us some of the work that they're doing in their Subcommittee with families and community members. So it was a really good meeting. We were able to really dig into some documents that we've been working on for the past several months, but hear the update from that Subcommittee. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Potter. Next, we are in the midst of our building tours. On Friday, December 3rd, the board members toured Cobles and Harris Hill, I'm sorry, not Harris Hill, and the high school. We toured the, we looked at the newly completed capital improvements. So for Cobles, that included things like the cafeteria, the classrooms additions, the kitchen, the loading docks. We also inspected areas associated with the proposed upcoming capital project, which include things like replacing floors, cabinets, and electrical systems. We also toured the high school, where you also looked at some of the newly completed capital projects weren't as flashy for this past one, things like some maintenance on the pool. Again, we're looking at things that are just basically maintenance items, as well as build enhancements and additions. And, and then we're also looking, talked about the upcoming capital projects. The, one thing that was interesting was we saw the work that was done to allow us to have lunches in the, you know, lunches in the building, which means we have to use the gym, and daily they have to move tables in and out of the gym, so there's adequate space for the students to dine, so we can, so we can have this, you know, students in school with dining facilities. And the students, the students pony up, they help with moving the tables daily, so that's, they're helping themselves out. I mean, I think they're taking ownership of this, which is great. So, does anyone want to say anything regarding the tour we just had? Lisa?
Okay. I'll just mention on behalf of the district, it is really nice. I did get feedback from our building custodians who joined us on these tours, that they really enjoyed that, getting FaceTime with the district office and the board, and being able to highlight and point out some of the things that they're really excited about. And you know, when you walk through our buildings, our custodians in B&amp;G do an incredible job. The buildings are clean, they're inviting, and those things do not go unnoticed. So they were really excited, especially at the high school, where it's a larger team. You know, the Cobles has one, a daily custodian, and then cleaners, but here, we had three custodians with us walking on the tour. So just wanted to sort of, I guess, shout out to them for that, but also they're proud to be able to pinpoint the work that they do here, and hearing that appreciation was great.
Thank you. And then upcoming, we have the, on Monday, we're going to go look at Indian Landing and Harris Hill, and Thursday, we will look at Scribner and Bay Trail. And so that is it for this tours. We have no unfinished business. Do we have any new business?
I do.
Sean?
All right, here we go. So I would like to announce that due to some, I would say, some family things, and also my husband's work has transferred locations, so I'd like to formally announce my resignation starting December 31st as a Penfield School Board Member. I'm very emotional about it. It's been, I've been proud to serve this community for a little while now. I want to thank especially Lisa, my mentor, who's answered all my questions and who's really been a big resource to me. His work is a finite amount of work, so we hope in the future, we will come back to Penfield. My children love it here. Not getting emotional, they, this is their family. My parents are here, my in-laws are here, so our heart is always going to be here, and we hope to come back. And this is the most valuable volunteer work I've ever done in my life, and I've done a lot of volunteer work. So, and I would just like to say, like, like my minister says in church every Sunday, we're not perfect, but we're perfect, we're more perfect together, and that's how I feel. We have some great conversations together as a board. We don't always agree, but I've been super proud to call myself a Penfield Board Member, and I hope to come back someday to this community. Don't make me cry. So.
Well, Sean, we're sorry to see you leave, but we do understand the reasons why. Every board member brings unique skills to the, to the team, and you brought us your experience with public relations and community advocacy. You've helped make the board better through your unique skills and experience. We wish you the best of success, and we hope to see you back in Penfield very soon.
We will be, we will be back. My children are holding me to it.
Any, any other comments on that? Anyone?
Just that we wish you well, and we'll miss you, Sean. You've been a very valuable addition. We've enjoyed, I've enjoyed working with you.
Thank you very much. And I'm already crying, so I know, I've known you.
You know, and we put, everybody puts a lot of their heart into this, and I don't think people realize how much of that, how much we put into these jobs. And, you know, it is, it's, it's a commitment, but there's ownership, and it's very hard to walk away from that.
Very, very difficult, yes.
So, again, thank you for all that you've done, and...
Thank you to everybody, to the Penfield community, thank you so much.
Again, we're looking forward to seeing you come back.
Thank you.
I just, I just, if the board's all saying very nice things, I have to also just make sure it's on record that, from the district point of view, thank you very much. You know, our entire staff knows how much our board works, their volunteer jobs with lots and lots of hours, and with all of the changes the last 18 months, even more so. So just on behalf of the district, thank you for serving, and thank you for all that you brought, and we are going to miss you. And then as superintendent, I'm going to miss your kids too, because they have brought joy every day in our school system. So we wish them luck if they need, like, superintendent, call their new superintendent to have a conversation. I'm happy to do that, whatever they need to be supported. But thank you, Sean, very, very much, on behalf of myself and the entire district.
Thank you. My husband asked me how many months it would take for me to join the PTA there, too.
Did you tell him months?
I said months.
Months, days.
Okay, thank you.
Any other new business? All right, with that, may I have a motion that the meeting be adjourned at 8:06 PM?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Are all those in favor? Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.